Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is An Swinzen. I'm chairman of the Village of Fishkill Planning Board. And I recall the Village of Planning Board for March 20th, 2025 to order. Will the secretary please take a roll call to the Espada Shiquorum?
Ezra Hawley.
Here.
Esther Jackson. Joe Testa.
Here.
And also the attendance, our McWarner Building Inspector, person, Roger Villant, here. And Victoria Paudera. That was the turn, not village turn, planning.
Okay, the, all right, the minutes for February 20th that were sent out were incorrect. So we will skip over that and we will review the proper minutes at their next meeting. Uh, next, first item on the agenda, we do have a public hearing that was scheduled for 6:00 PM for Promenade of Fishkill or 5:42, Route 9, for a public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved. Back in.
I have a second motion, second on the floor, on favor.
Aye.
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 Carrie, for the representative of Promenade, please come forward and identify yourselves by record.
Abby Heinemann, Promenade Fishkill.
Okay. Nick, do you want to explain what this is all about? And then we'll turn it over to Victoria to fill in some details.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Um, as the board may recall, we asked Promenade to come back before the planning board as a result of the fact that their prior site plan approval had expired as construction had not been completed within the two years as required by the code after its granting of approval, and they were under construction during that time. Um, so as a result of that, we, um, we had to issue them a stop work order, rescind a building permit that had been issued. The applicants, uh, complied with all of our directives and orders. Um, they've been cooperating fully with us, providing us with the necessary documentation that we've asked for. Um, we've had a number of site visits and communications with them. Uh, and as a result, uh, we've asked them to come back before the planning board for an extension of their site plan approval. Uh, and then ultimately, if that is granted, a reissuance of the necessary permits to continue and complete construction. So that's why we're here this evening.
How, how do you stand on your construction so far at this point?
I would say we're about 90% finished. As soon as we're ready to get the permits back up and running, we're ready to rock and roll.
Does anybody? Yeah. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak or have questions on this?
Just one thing to note, Mr. Chairman, we did receive one additional communication on this. And, uh, we have a draft agreement. Uh, one thing we had requested, uh, on behalf of the village was documentation regarding ambulance service. Um, as that has become a, a new issue for communities throughout the state of New York, uh, including the Village of Fishkill, um, we did ask for, uh, a provider agreement that they would have a dedicated ambulance service or would not be taxing on the village's service. And they have entered into a understanding, uh, with ambulance for that service. Um, and we have their draft agreement, which they intend to be executing in the near term. Is there any update on that, sir?
That is called, as soon as we're ready to begin our opening process, we'll execute contract with them.
Okay, and that would be a condition of any certificate of occupancy. You would have that executed beforehand? Okay. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, you can continue.
Ma'am, you want to speak? Come up.
Did we make a motion opening? Yes, yes. So I, I just.
Could you identify yourself or?
Animal Boy, um, and I live in Fishkill, the town of Fishkill, just outside the village. Um, so I, I was curious, um, when I heard the 90%, I don't know. I know that the project's been going on for quite a number of years. Um, and there's new faces on the planning board. And so I'm wondering if the applicant is going to like kind of let everyone know since you are going to be, I think, making some sort of decisions on the project? Or is that, is that incorrect? I don't know. Whereas everything's already approved and they just have to do the work. Um, but if the planning board is, is going to be making any decisions, then I, regardless of an extension or not, I would hope that the applicant would come in and, you know, go over what they're doing. And can you verify that it is 90% finished?
I would say that based on our, uh, visit to the site, um, they are probably close to that number. I can't give an exact, but I would say they're 85 to 90% complete.
Great.
Um, and just so the record is clear, what they're asking for is an extension of the existing site plan approval, no new changes. It is of the prior approval of the place.
Okay, thank you. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience wish to comment, some questions? Nick?
I don't mind explaining what the project is about. That's what you guys want me to do.
Go ahead.
So I can talk directly to you. So this is.
We don't have to address us.
No.
I appreciate.
Anyway, so this is a project of an assisted living community for 200 residents. There will be 160 Medicaid, um, beds that will be designated for people that have Medicaid, for whatever reason. Um, we also will be having a 30-bed dementia unit, a locked, secure unit for people with dementia or any other, um, diagnosis similar to dementia. We also will have some private paid beds as well. So it's a combination of, of quite a few different areas, um, for assisted living and memory care. And this will be an all-inclusive, full-service facility.
Victoria, do you want to?
So, I mean, that description is accurate. Um, as Nick pointed out earlier, these are the same plans that you approved, um, in 2017. And they were extended through 2020. And then during COVID, uh, they lost track during construction of seeking the appropriate extensions. So there aren't any changes and you can confirm that?
Correct.
Um, to what they've already built out.
Anybody on?
I have a question. So, so 2017, we gave it to them. They should have, they got it renewed again in 2019.
So in March 2017, uh, we approved the project, which had included a few small component of a hotel. Yes, they were going to keep a portion for visitors to come and stay. Then they came back in August of 2017 and they amended that plan to get rid of the hotel and just add extra beds. So this is the same project as you approved August 17th, 2017.
Okay. What I'm, my point was, so if it was 2017, then again in 2019, and then it missed 21 and 23, and now we're in 25. So I know we have a certain number of reissue one, re-ups.
We're beyond the extension. Technically, you would be reapproving the site plan.
Okay, so I'm just saying, going forward in, in two years, will we have to come back and do this again?
We better be done.
So I'm just trying to get the, like, the timing on, back on track.
Yeah. So they don't lose track of it again. I think they're going to pay extra close attention.
Yes, we will.
This has caused a few months delayed for them.
Correct.
So I guess you're a little early for your 2025 renewal because that should have been done in August. Okay. Yeah, I just was making sure we're not missing a date of some sort. Okay.
Right, so technically you're treating this as a reapproval, but on the same set of facts. So as you know, unless there's been a change in circumstances, you have to reapprove it.
Okay.
So that's where we're at. It doesn't require a referral back to county planning. Um, we are in IMA exemption community with county planning and they don't need to see, um, renewals or reapprovals of site plan special permit with no changes. Uh, you did need to hold the public hearing, so that's why we're here tonight.
I'm good.
Anybody else in the audience? Second call? Third call? Board members? I'll entertain a motion, we close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Now the motion is second, close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Our next step, thank you. Victoria?
So if no one has any questions and everyone's ready, um, we did consider that resolution. We approved the project. It does not have the condition that Mr. Warner just raised about the, um, ambulance contract. So we can amend it to make that a condition uh, that they must comply with before getting a certificate of occupancy. So what, what this resolution does, if you go to page two, um, it says that you reaffirm the special use permit findings that you adopted on March 16th, 2017 for the project. And then you grant site plan and special use permit approval to the project as described and shown on the application materials, which are identified as being the March 10th, 2018 application material. So no changes from that date. Um, subject to a few conditions. And then one is payment of fees and escrow. Um, and then just the general conditions about, um, you know, they need to come back in for separate signage, modifications would require renewing, et cetera. Those are just the boilerplate conditions. So we can add a condition three, if the board so chooses that says that prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall provide evidence of an executed contract with an ambulance provider.
I, I think that'd be a good idea because it is a, um, a new issue that has arisen since 2017. The board agree?
Yes.
Okay, so we can add that in.
Any further questions from the board?
No, I'm good.
So, and I'll entertain a motion to, uh, accept this resolution with the new condition to be added?
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, so when updated resolution is, comes in, then I'll sign all that coming through.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much. Good luck.
Good luck.
Welcome to the Village of Fishkill again.
Yeah, welcome back.
Be welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is Extra Space Storage, 35 Merritt Boulevard. The applicant, please come forward. Take your name for the record.
Hello, I'm Maria Vertundo. Hello. So we would like to replace the signage there at the site. Um, we want to replace the pylon panels in the existing pylon. Uh, we want to replace the channel letters on the building. And we do want to add a little office sign. So the customers know where the office is.
Well, the office sign would be considered a directional sign, which was not, would not need a sign.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, do you have samples, colors?
No.
You have them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they were in Hilton.
We have them.
We have them?
Yeah.
Are you going to run up and get them?
Okay.
Okay.
They, they are the, the proprietary or standard colors of extra space storage, just so the board is aware.
Okay, and what about the, uh, the signs themselves? Do they comply?
They do comply with the regulations for the district, yes.
Okay. Are you, do you're replacing the existing signs, is that?
Yes. Um, the, the pylon, we're just going to slide the panels out and slide new ones in. And then the building letters are going to say extra space storage. They say life storage now.
Oh, I think you.
So we're looking at, uh, two signs? The pylon sign and the building mounted sign, is that correct?
Yes.
I, I lost.
Does the board want to handle these together or?
Here it is. Now I got it.
Got it?
Yep. The, the, is this a national or regional?
National.
National?
It's a national, yeah.
Storage.
People need storage units.
They're everywhere.
Yeah, and they, they recently took over, um, a whole bunch of new sites. Yeah, locally, Middletown, yeah, they're just buying up like small business.
Yeah.
Yeah. This sounds, life storage sounds sort of like a bio something. Yeah, my old company, we had a DNA thing, it was called. Anyway. So we're going to just do the pylon one first?
Here.
Five by six and six, same height. All right. I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
I'm good.
This is the pylon sign.
Yeah, this are. Yeah.
Yeah, it does comply for the building inspector. Oh, and, uh, okay. I'll entertain a motion to.
Uh, move to accept the pylon sign for, hy- pylon sign for extra space storage at 35 Merritt Boulevard as per application.
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Second sign being the building mounted sign. And this sign does comply also?
Yes, sir.
Teresa?
Oh, good.
Good?
It looks bigger, but maybe not.
The previous, but it's.
The within.
Yeah, it's a little longer. Um, with, there, there's more letters. So it scales out longer.
I'm good.
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 Everybody's happy, it does comply, I'll entertain a motion to accept the sign. Sanctimonious.
Move to accept the, uh, building mounted sign for extra space storage at 35 Merritt Boulevard as per application.
Second.
I have a motion is second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Welcome to the Village of Fishkill.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too, thanks again.
Next on the agenda is Spark by Hilton, 20 Skylar Boulevard for sign approval. Applicant, please come forward and identify yourself for the record.
Steve Morris from Glodey Signs. I believe everyone has the drawings there. We are just seeking approval for the building sign at this time. And I do have samples here.
Yeah, what bathroom?
Okay. Pretty.
I'd like to explain those, um, those colors there. The solid purple color that you have will be the large background of the sign. The purple letters, letters will be the, um, perforated purple. So if you look at your drawing, your second page in the bottom right, you're going to see what it looks like at night. The purple background, the solid purple background is not light. The letters that look, the purple during the day will be white at night. And then the black perforated is the by Hilton, which will look like black during the day and white at night. And the little star feature up on the top is the green.
Nick, does the sign comply?
It does, Mr. Chairman. Let me just confirm one item. I believe everything is correct. Yes.
Five, five eighteen.
All right. I think Jill wants.
Teresa?
I'm good.
Powerful LEDs, which is, yeah, they're, they're so tight, the pixels, that, um, the purple is, um, now becomes opaque and just the power coming out of the LEDs. You've probably seen it with bright aids that look blue during the day, they're white at night. Yeah, that's the most common one.
That's the only sign on the building?
Yeah.
That one sign is on the building?
What?
I thought there was more.
Uh, there's only the one on the building, but there's also a, a monument sign. And I believe currently they're going to cover that and then come back in for a.
Yes.
A sign approval later for that sign, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're only approving this one building sign?
Currently it says Wing Gate by Weston on the two signs.
Right.
What's so much money to?
Everybody's happy, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to accept the sign for Spark by Hilton at 20 Skylar Boulevard as per application.
Second.
A motion is second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome to the Village of Fishkill.
Thank you, I've been here doing this here for 48 years.
You actually came home one time, long time ago.
Thank you very much.
Good night. Next on the agenda is Danny's Table Restaurant and Bar, 1113 Main Street for a sign approval. Applicant, please come forward.
Good evening, evening. My name is Naieli Rosinos, I'm with Danny's Table, I'm, we come from Mount Kisco.
And you wish to?
I don't know if you can read my writing there, Mr. Chairman. I made a, a note on this one, so everyone was clear. The, the sign depicted, um, while the size and the measurements are larger than what is prescribed by the code, the actual text of the sign conforms to the regulation. So the outline and the border exceeds the regulation. But I believe that the intent is of the code, that the actual sign itself, in this case, what would be the words, uh, it conforms. So if you see that, there's also a photograph depicting, uh, what the sign will look like uh, once it's complete. This is just, uh, down the street from us here. And I also brought photographs for you of what the prior signage that was approved looked like, so you can see.
Oh, that was much bigger.
Yeah, that was much.
The old sign is bigger than the newer sign.
Much, much busier than, um, what they're proposing here.
Some French.
But I think it's certainly more conforming and certainly, certainly more in character with the, you know, the downtown feel that we have here on Main Street.
And the color of the sign is?
A white background with black, uh, lettering. They do have a sample, I, I think you though can ascertain white and black, uh, fairly well.
I like it.
It's same lighting, right? Yep.
Same lighting, no changes.
Overhead not.
No purple turning into white at night, uh, blue into green, anything like that.
Step it up.
Good, I'm good.
Yeah, good.
Good? Go?
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Oh wait, hold on, hold on.
Turns our minds.
Yeah, I'll stay here, I'm sorry. Let me do it.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move to accept the sign for Danny's Table at 1113 Main Street as per application.
Second.
A motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. This is a old restaurant, uh, American style or?
Yeah, American food, um, but it's going to be a mix of like Italian, some French. And it's going to have some like, some Latin taste, you know? It's not going to be like plain, it's going to, it's flavorful. The food's good. Welcome to the village. We look forward to seeing you there.
Cool.
Yeah, thanks.
What am I going to be? All right. Great.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're good.
Very good.
Good night.
Thank you very much.
I'm moving out with the fish of pharmacy.
Next item on the agenda. I'm not going to even try to pronounce the person, Tattoo Parlor, uh, 1127 Main Street for continuation of the special use permit.
Definitely.
Please come forward.
Can you say it for us? Melissa Cottis. Nah, it, it looks worse than it is. The eye, it always like an eye at the end. Uh. Hey, man, it never works, right? Uh, my name is Brett Lysakatis. I appreciate you guys being here. Um, I was here last month, uh, had to get some stuff in order. Uh, I had to go for a zoning, uh, variance. So now I'm just here for a special use permit. Um, looking to open up a shop at 1127 Main Street. Um, currently in Hopewell now, so I needed to get a variance. But now I'm looking to come to the village here. I gave you guys the binders and lady, um, last month. So I don't know if, uh, any of them had them still, but I didn't bring any extras this time, I'm sorry.
All right, we saw it.
Yep.
What's that?
We saw it.
All right, thank you, hopefully it was good, so.
Perfect.
Um, yeah, so I'm just trying to get the special use permit approval, uh, for that location there.
Ezra wasn't here.
So, oh, yeah, Ezra's in here.
At, at tonight's meeting, the applicant is looking for you to set a public hearing for your April meeting and to refer it to Dutchess County Planning and Development. At this point, they have not received the variances, they're in process. But the zoning board will be meeting before our next, so we can keep the project moving forward.
Okay. Can't read the phone, review it?
You sure?
Yeah, thanks.
I can have one for one second. Do you have more to sketch on the building?
I think it's up front, Nick, there's a, kind of like a general overlook out of what the front would look like.
Anybody else need more?
Building.
Okay.
But the one thing I wanted to ask you, Brett, is did you happen to know the measurement of the, the front door?
That I don't know offhand, but I can get it for sure.
I just just wanted to know if, um, this building was handicap accessible?
Okay. Like in terms of it being wide enough for a wheelchair?
Yeah.
I don't see why you shouldn't be able to. It, it was fairly wide, I know it wasn't too, too narrow, but I could definitely.
If it's 36 inches, I just, the clearance, you know?
I could definitely double check and let you guys know ASAP.
Yeah, so it's probably, isn't it grandfathered if it's an old building?
It, it is, I, it's, it's not, it's just a question. And, and it would be grandfathered, he wouldn't need to change it. I just, it was just my curiosity about the building.
Definitely check for sure. I think that's the one thing I probably didn't measure was the door.
Okay, it was not marked, I just, just was wondering off the top of my head.
There.
For the, uh, public hearing?
Yeah. Let's see, a public hearing would be April, April 17th. Right? That's the third Thursday, yeah. Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to set a public hearing for this project for April seventeenth. At, I think question at six o'clock or assume thereafter?
So moved.
Okay.
I have a motion second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
Opposed, carried. Oh. And we will also need a. Motion to send this to the Dutchess County Planning Board.
Yeah. Second.
A motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Okay.
All right.
Thank you all very much.
Very much.
He on the seventeenth.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Last item on the agenda is. Yeah, right. Latin cuisine for a site plan approval, but the applicant, please come forward, identify yourself. For the record.
Good afternoon.
Uh, my name is Charles May, I'm uh. Representing the Laura Farrow, who is the owner of the Latin. Restaurant, which is located on one oh oh four Main Street, which is in the Main Street Mall. Uh, the, the project, uh. Laura has operated a restaurant, which is located in Suite One at the mall since twenty twenty three. And it so happens that the adjacent. Room, which was formerly a gift shop, is now vacant, so she would like to. Open, open a door to the adjacent gift shop and utilize it as a restaurant. Uh, we are here this evening to. See if we, to achieve a use uh, variance uh, to be utilized as a restaurant versus a gift shop. Uh, what we have done, we have spoken to the building inspector. And as you can see, we have provided you with photographs for a period of seven days. Uh. The, the days are varied, so that you have an idea of the, the number of parking spaces that are available. On each and every day. Uh, for the most part, we, we took, we took photographs which were located. From the sign at the Main Street entrance towards the post office. Uh, that was the directive that we were given. And you can easily see that um, we would, we would, we would have at least fifteen to twenty parking spaces, which, which would be available. At each and every time that we took the photographs, some photographs were taken in the morning, some photographs were taken in the evening. So therefore you have a variety of times and days. Uh, the other thing that I would like to say is that. On the westerly portion of the shopping center, there's a few photographs that show. That there are so many parking spaces available, uh, it was. Quite obvious that there would be no parking concerns. Uh, with this particular project.
Um. Ricky. I saw in your, your notes uh, that you had mentioned that the photograph study was, was not adequate. Could you expand on that, please?
So, we've had a couple applications very similar to this. Uh, in other plazas where they're required to come before the board for site plan approval for these changes in use. Um, so, I mean. It's hard to say that it raises to the occasion of really requiring a full site plan, uh, as it's defined, site plan application and site plans. Um, as far as the information that's provided on the site plan, that's typically, typically be required. Um, with a site plan as it's defined in the village uh, code. Um, the way that we typically handle these, um. And Sarah. Out, touches on it in her letter also, um, about providing the, on the plan. Um, information on the existing parking count. Um. Relative to the approved parking count and what the approved uses were at that time. Um, there's been a few projects in this plaza in the past few years, and you could probably foil the village records. Um, to get that information relatively quickly, La Sorella was just approved a few years ago.
Yeah, it's on the opposite side.
Filio did um, a pretty thorough parking study in twenty twenty. With a table which laid out each tenant. And the spaces that were expected, and then, you know, they did it with different times. That might be a good starting point, is to take the information they've already compiled and just update it.
Well, this is new news to me, but anyway, if you could give me that plan, I could use it as a model, and then we could uh, come back with uh, with some more data. But uh, I mean.
I don't think it needs to be as, I mean, this, they give us a, a pretty large study, and maybe it's just a matter of updating it for this change.
Yeah, I mean.
It's just a breakdown of the existing uses in that plaza, and. With each use, it was, it was approved for a certain number of parking, parking spaces. And using that. Table compared to how your, how your proposal will change the required parking and what's provided. Um, the, the pre, the existing use was, is. Was retail. And you're going from retail to restaurant, um, so. Showing that change in a table, um, and how it impacts. Your, your parking relative to what was approved, if it, if it's shows that the proposed parking. Um, they providing less parking than would be required under the prior approval. And that's something that the planning board just needs to know, and whether they're inclined to waive it or. Or take another action, so, but it. I, as, as Victoria was mentioning, it, I think, starting with what was a. Looked at before and put together, you're showing that table, um. Is something that the board can at least use to, to make a determination.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take. I never received any comments at all.
So, here. This is our um. Planner, and she has it all written out here, I have each one and two, so it has a lot of information there.
Yeah, I think this is the first that I've seen these. In any event, I would appreciate the opportunity to take a look at that project, as I can use it as a model, is it on file? Is it something that we can access easily?
I'm, I'm sure that with.
I can email it to you, if you give me your um.
Yeah, the email is Charles.
Oh, okay, right now.
I think you have my email address, don't you?
I have, I have it, yeah, I got the number today.
Charles.
Charles P. May, M A Y A S S O C. At AOL dot com.
Charles P. May at AOL dot com.
Hey, no, Charles P. May, A S S O C. At AOL dot com.
Okay, I'm gonna send that over to you. Happy January.
So running through some of our other comments, um. Again. The village code outlines the site plan requirements, as far as what's required to be shown in the plan, uh. Existing condition survey prepared by licensed land surveyor, existing utilities. So, I mean. That's, that's what's required for a site plan, I understand that this doesn't. Look like a, uh, what would typically be considered a site plan. Because it's a change in use, so, um, I know that the board has in the past considered waiving certain, um. Certain requirements, um. To just, given this, uh, given the circumstances, um, so. I don't know if the board would, would be inclined to do, to do that for this, um. The other comments that we have were relative to the grease trap, um, you're gonna be expanding the use of this restaurant. Uh, grease trap sizing is based on number of seats, um, in a restaurant. Uh, so a seat count and evaluation of the existing grease trap facility is needed. Um. So, and that would be something that would be submitted to the village for review by the sewer department. Um, and, and also, if there's gonna be any changes to the grease trap, if it needs to be enlarged, then that would need to be approved by the health department. Um. And. We put out there for the board, if they felt it would be helpful to have a, a floor plan submitted, um, you're proposing to connect these two. Um, these two units, um, how that would impact, you know, the means of egress, um, to the building, to these units. Um. It, it's not necessarily required, um, but we were putting it out there, it may be helpful for the board to realize what, what exactly is gonna be.
We had, we had intended to submit a conceptual floor plan, so that you would get an idea of. What the restaurant would look like. That was our intent at the next meeting.
Okay.
Um. So having said that, I guess what we'll do is we'll respond to the comments, and I guess I can give uh. I can give you a call, Christian, if I have any questions.
As you're going through, if you wanna have a call to talk through any of these.
Yeah, what I would do is, though, I would appreciate if the board, I mean, we. As, as far as the utilities, uh, which are required, as far as catch basins, grading and drainage, and electrical units and things of that nature. I don't know, I wondered if we could just sort of uh. Forego having the client enlist the services of a surveyor in order to be able to provide that information. I could probably do a research if there's the, on file, the shopping center. I could do that, but I, I would not want to have my client. Pay for the services of a surveyor just for this particular project, because it's not one of that magnitude.
I think you'll, if you go through, have the ability to look at the file, um. There's some already pretty detailed information relative to utilities, existing conditions.
For the shopping center?
Yep.
That's fine, I appreciate that.
I, I don't think we have enough. Information before us to send it to the county or set up a public hearing at this point, I think we need further information, um. That. Address the uh. Uh, you can also contact Sarah Brown, you have her. Information's on, you have a copy of this?
I just gave it to.
Okay.
Yeah, I just received, I just received it tonight.
For any, if you have any questions as far as hers concerns are. And you can contact Larry. Nick, do you have any comments on this?
I, I don't tonight, Mr. Chairman, um, but as we kind of dig into it more and review the consultant's memos, I think we can, you know, have some more comment on that.
Richie, you have any?
I do, so I live across the street from here, and I was, because with this. I have a lot, I get a lot of. Restaurant garbage in my yard, because, and I was, probably more of a landlord thing about increasing your. Um. Capacity, because it does, I don't know, we get a lot of stuff in our yard, I mean, you live right next door too, you, you get a lot of it too.
We have that issue, but not in on dumpsters, we put a lock on it because we complained to the landlord. Uh, he put some signs and he sent us a note stating that, uh, they check in their cameras to see if there's dumping it, because there's that people from. Other.
So, so it's getting overflow, overloaded?
They put it on top of our dumpster, even though it's with a lock. Um, we tried many times to tell the landlord, like, please check the cameras, because, you know, we do repercussions. Of the people that are dumping, sometimes we get precautions, we get.
Yeah.
But, you know, he, he sent us an email and it's, you know.
If he gives him his name after. Because it's been going on for decades, so.
It's not, it's not only delivery, we put a lock and we still get piles of garbage in all dumpsters, and we have even, I think, the biggest dumpsters in. That other place, like the Chinese, because it's smaller than one.
Mm-hmm.
Um. She's over there, and we always tell her, you know, like, don't put any more, that's why we have the locks, but. This is causing a lot of problems.
Yeah.
Yeah, but in our, in our, in our part, we got the biggest of them.
I get the landlord's name every time I have to pick up, grab in my garbage in my yard, and I pick up, and I go to my neighbor, because she's a butcher, so.
And then with the wind that we've been having, all the storms, like, I live behind the dumpsters, and we're getting all backyard because the stuff blew to our side, all of them.
Broke your fence too.
Yeah, it broke my fence, yes, yeah.
Okay, that was my, my two cents. Garbage.
For the comments? Well.
See you next month.
Okay, so with that, what we'll do is we'll compile a response to these comments, and we'll be back.
Like you're on the seventeenth then. That uh, wraps up. The agenda.
Good night.
For tonight, uh. Everybody that attended the uh. Training session we had after last meeting, and thank you, Victoria and Sarah here, you got one credit for that. Uh, on.
Got a credit for the other one. But on our.
Okay, and on. Tuesday, April twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, there's a ZBA overview and. Uh, two, there's two sessions, one is ZBA overview, and the other one is short term rental. Regulations. Uh, they'll be up at Dutchess County.
Yeah. No.
Uh, it's a Dutchess County Farm and Home Center, uh. And it's five dollars for each session, so if you go, get a receipt, and turn your receipt in, you get your five dollars back. And if any, if anybody wants to ride up there, I'm going up, so just give me a call, and you can ride up with me.
Are you guys going?
And. That's all I have, Teresa, you have anything?
No, I don't think so, no. I don't think it'll allow.
Here we can borrow the hearse. Nobody?
No.
Sorry. Nick, you have anything, Chris?
I have nothing to report, uh, at the moment.
Then I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
A motion second adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, and we will see you all on the seventeenth.
That would sound great.
I, I have some, you can have it.
Yes, isn't he?